I need everybody on this flow. If y'all ready to see this shit. We ain't playing up in here tonight. Sacramento's finest is up in this motherfucker. Let go. Showtime. Everybody backstage at the City Council. Right now backstage. Who we missing? Look like everybody here. Sacramento make some motherfucking noise. We up in here. City Council, I know who's standing here. My nigga, Rascal in the building. My nigga Mike Dapson in the building. These my real niggas too. City Council up in here. We about to get ill, boy. Ladies? Sacramento. I just got to make some noise. B, motherfuckin' smooth.
Sacramento, this is Real Rich Ross. I just letting y'all know, this is my nephew. The City Council, rough appointment guys, man, you know they doing they thing. UWstage.com, y'all check it out. FNG, Premier Social Media, yeah.
Tonight. I need y'all to make some noise, see it. If y'all ready to fall out, let's get ill. Say it right now. Here come y'all. I can't do it. Get on your head. Don't you say it, y'all. I'm being out front of the end of time, somebody pass me the crown, let me show you I rock. Blue side, push through ice, get to the crowd. New hype is moving, so the niggas say. I don't run to you or laugh for this shit. Speaking of time and yo. I'm seeing you in prison, you running my operation. My phone call is still in my hesitation. I'm next to the operating, this is the creation, this right foot that hits the number four later. Something like we need some spirit, like a tiger without a chain. I'm like, y'all welcome to the show. It's no review, my bro. Welcome six minutes, six, six minutes, oh. Welcome to the stage. Yeah. We want to bring this one. Tell this man, don't you hear his name? Welcome to the stage. In the morning, you're my hunter. Come on, hands up. Put your hands up, come on. Back down. I'm so 101, baby, hear you say. I'm so 101. Ay, yo, you said. Every year I breathe and see a word that they gon' play it. Play up a bitch and they big cream, my bitch and it's flip three. I jam with the party, get into fly, yeah. This is hot, dawn and hot, done it. Slow your power, we out spinning. Got boys for who's what. It's no problem to get it. Damn, we're near the line, boy. If you grown, see the best of the player, opportunity grow. Your passion, your need, need a hundred millimole. 360, girl, 1.4. Fall back if you ain't ready for that kinda show. This is us, so 101. Let me hear you say. So 101. I ain't never cooked with this shit, man. We sent the kids to college, man. You know how this shit go, man. I said. We in, we in our house. Hey, you right on the spot. We on it, coach. Having a good time, man. You know, it's no. Ay, yo, man, that's nice. If I don't see your girl, I ain't gonna fuck with her. You know that? Hey, hey, hold up. Car one. I'd like to, I'd like to give a shout out to my best friend, but he not. Hey, you just felt the lions, see it. Ay, y'all just felt, you just felt the lions, man, right here, man. What I'm saying?
Have money, have heart, niggas, I say. Have money, have heart, nigga.
They calling me T99. Y'all might have heard of these niggas, they go by the name of Swift and Poino. Ay, yo, and y'all already know that we so real, nigga. Sacramento, get your motherfuckin' ass up, boy. Shit, you got it, we real niggas. It's real niggas, they doing real shit, real niggas. Get money, in the spot, we bigger. Real niggas, get money, in the spot, we done enough. Get money, in the spot, we done enough. Real niggas, get your shit, in the spot, we done enough, real. Money hoes, my, for you, don't give a shit how you feel, nigga. I was out that field, busting them pills, stuffing them pills. Rock with real hip, go with that motherfucker. Jay, ho, ho, ho. Got the shit, that's the plan. We will do, every time, all I be on is true shit. Hell, yeah, all time, that's the real shit. I was out that relationship, that couple living in wheelhouse. I'm all the time, I'm sick, yo, fucking real, nigga. Yeah, she only fucking real. No, I'm all, I, she only fucking real. I'ma score the touchdown. He ain't know, man, nothing. Nigga, look for a ref, he in the T-cord. We got this young, baby. I ain't giving you balls, I'm taking that cake right here, man. Talking about some people and shit. Let me break up. Haha. Let me get it, man. Let's go. Nothing if it ain't on the DJ. Who's on the best, what a real one. Cash, check, you can add a text, he still rolling. Nigga, quit your, see ya. Gangsta, gangsta, all they, they send the paper. I'm the man, I'm the man, fuck that shit. What he hit for, round here? That's what he do, she look like a bomb. What he hit for, round here? What he hit for, round here? What he hit for, round here? Let me see, let's go. What he hit for, round here? Nothing if it ain't on the DJ. What he hit for, round here? Nothing if it ain't on the DJ. What he hit for, round here? I know about bars, and we not gonna play with your. As bars, ay, yo, T99, you ready? Do what you do. Put that on my phone, homie. You know, ay, I just. Ay, sack it up the server while niggas is acting nervous. T99, man, sack the motherfucking server. Look, I'm up fire, baby, dragon, plus I'm loaded up that gas. Since we did this shit together. I'm bringing dragon, plus I'm loaded up that gas. You know I need that. Okay, I'm back at it like a crack addict. Stomping up the leaf on the ground. Bitches don't need smoke, that's who we smoking up, up by the bam. He dead when I ride him. Till I got no cute clothes. Till I got no cute clothes. Rock, rock, bitch, you don't know why I can see these niggas flip. Niggas better watch they business, shoot the T, hey, yo, my dust. Man, I'm something like some business, I be deep off in the dust. Let's go. I get a few bucks, go hard for what? Go hard, gotta move up the ladder, maybe we taking that clue as a rapper. That's the incorrect answer. You know what it is, I'm a factory, California streets, they that's where I'm from, you see? This is where I'm from, you see? E, AK, E-trang, come on. Grab a mic, grab a mic. Hold up. Man, he's rapping, huh? We need everybody to the front. We need all this pressure to the track. Smooth as it feel like. Lean on the wall, this right here, make me lean on the wall. Lean on the wall, lean on the wall, come on. Come on. Come on. Look at shorty, watch her drop, come on. Ay, look at shorty, watch her drop, come on. Hey, look at shorty, watch her drop, let's go. Lights on, lights on, lights on. I got it, it's about to be another episode. I'm about to beat you, I'm. Go ahead, go ahead, go get it, go get it. Don't worry, get your fuck with it. He knows, know, I'ma get, go get it. Go get it. That's all, cause you want the perfect. It ain't no fun, bitch, you know I say. You're the who, you fuck, nah, I ain't playing. You niggas here love all day singing. I'm on the alcohol. What? Lean on the wall. This right here, make me lean on the. What? Lean on the wall, lean on the wall. Come on. Look at shorty, watch her drop. Look at shorty, look at shorty. Look at shorty, watch her drop. Look at shorty, look at shorty. Look at shorty, watch her drop. Look at shorty, look at shorty. Don't stop playing, I'ma pick it up. I'll pick it up. Got the still a base, so I'ma slow. Hey. Come on, level one. My body knocking down the corners, put, put. Put, put. These beefs all way to the hood. Hood, hood. Come twist, pop, or. Red, red, red. Yo, some whip, pride, sex. Pass what she say, man. Why you making a rap? Can't tell, she tellin' him. DJ, lips like Bob only good game, I'ma go. That's with me, I came out. Come on, come on. Break out. This right here, make me lean on the wall. Lean on the wall, lean on the wall. Ay, yo, look at shorty, watch her drop. Look at shorty, watch her. Ay, yo, hold up, man, that shit fool you. Ay, where my nigga Lacy, the way, man? Ballin', hard, ballin', hard, ballin'. Lacy, yo, where you at? Ballin', hard, ballin', hard, his game, game. Let's go. Ay, yo, come on, man, turn it up with me. Turn it up with me. Come on, come on. Let's go. Come on, ballin', hard, his game. I'm from America, from Canada, rap, don't need rich. Nigga, you doing too much, see? Let's go. You got a nigga that? I can tell you about that. Ballin', yeah. Ballin', twenty-four, yeah. I'm from America, from Canada, rap, don't. Little black soul, shit, real, real. Yeah, man, I'm a poor guy, like Ray Allen. I just say, can't see. I jump to, get wrapped in paper, my bank is high on my chest. Let's go. They trying to fall, this league is clear, got no fault. They hit, they hit, got no picture, this gun thirsty. I fuckin' this shit, let's go. This pot is popping like Tony Hawk, this fire works, this shit, this shit. This brief nigga, spit it all tonight. I, I ain't saying it was ballin', hard, this game. Gucci on my brain. You ever hustle, homie? Ballin', 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 ballin'. I tell you now, I been stacking paper. Who took the rock, they got stacks to play with. And that touchdown, he can shake with Vegas. Back and back, they gotta up your weight. Take one of that, when the swell baby, who be on that, like, fuck you, baby. Miami. I deserve real niggas, you ready? Top of the day, back with a show, fur. My B's low, but I don't care. We ballin', hard, I say it ain't fair. Two ninety, super. D, tell that street, dream ballin'. Whoa, Michael Jordan, go, yeah.
Get you with that Willie D. Somebody said that you ain't had no heat.
Ay, man, I'm just telling you what the word was. This is what I'm gonna do, though, what's what I'm gonna do? I'm bouncing, nigga. Let me, ay, you know, earlier, I seen they was doing the flickering lights, I feel like Kevin Hart. I want the lights to flicker while I'm performing. I was just flickering lights on my shit, boy, man. Bounce out. Bounce out. Bounce out. Look, bounce out, bounce out. Look, bounce out, not tripped out. Showed up and I tripped out. He shit to crack out. Run up and I crack round. Rock out in my background. My weed, you can't get my. See, I can touch, see, we bout to explode. It's all my peoples, what's up? All my niggas, yeah, we be pushing that, yeah. Got the little whiskey, boy, now we touring. Tell the boy, free, boy. I'm a six, ready, free, the cream of the crop. Never mind, let's eat it, boy. My city got it hot. I grew up in the slum, we was trying to be dope. Real shit, say. Real niggas, this day, wanna ice out, lifestyle. Forever, forever, ever, forever, ever. I stay fly, smoke good, I rock clean, you know. Forever, forever, ever, forever, ever. The real niggas, this day, wanna put the bottom of my lifestyle. What happened, man?
No.
Uh-oh.
That shit was hot. Yeah, hey, it stopped 'cause it was fucking hot. You know Black Steve also hot shit.
I need y'all to say forever, ever, with me, alright? I want this motherfucking truck. Let's go.
Let's go. Now we going to the program. Let's go.
Forever, forever, ever, forever, ever. You know, right, right, forever.
Then I hope I bought, so I stop, ready for good. Smoke good, you know. Say what? I can get it, money, go. Feel real, nigga, this day, what? I just see on my life.
Forever, forever, ever, forever, ever. I stay fly, smoke good, I rock clean, you know. Forever, forever, ever, forever. On the bottom of my lifestyle. Forever, forever, ever, forever, ever. I stay fly, I smoke good, I rock clean, you know. Forever, forever, ever, forever. That champagne, OG. Slide through with the tint, don't even worry, man. It's on me. Fix the rug for my hood, if not, you should know. Forever, forever, ever, forever, ever. I'ma be riding around doing my thing, making them mad at the game, letting them hate. You look just up through the city like I'm pretty long. I'm blowing on every chain. I just been chosen to wake up, nigga, ain't only it's not a game. And I'm flying. Yeah, the homies call me YG. How you? Keepin' on some of that YU. You got hoes from East, YU. I'm bossin' like gang day. Where you niggas from the Golden State? Try to date in my lifestyle, my lifestyle, I'm your bitch, man.
You know what I mean, I like my.
You already know, yeah, my nigga T61, been a member, you already know what it is. Shut up, dude, rest in peace. Uh-oh, hold up. I see my nigga, oh, up in the building. Where all my niggas with their windows down? I tell y'all, I see you, my G. I roll with the windows down. If you roll with the windows down, man, make some motherfucking noise. You're doing like this, right here. Let's go, man. Uh-oh, uh-oh, spittles. Uh-oh, uh-oh, Squirrel. Big B. With the brown, yeah, corns with my B's, slapping, hell, I'm laughing, ay, yo. I'm slapping, hell, I'm laughing. And corns with my B's, slapping, come on. Ride with the windows, hey, ride with the windows down, ride with the windows. Come on, ride with the. Come on. Ride with the windows down, buy all this ten, make sure to see your nigga, that. Stack money, damn, baby, look at me. Bring the smoke, everything, make it smoke. Fuck it out, man. Be a sweat, be a bag, this shit from the heart. Only go to hack. You play, ain't got no limit. Don't belong, nobody shit is getting played. Play shit, two, wait, but you can catch. Hey, ain't wrong with some of you niggas, that's a big thing. Go ahead, have a kid. Y'all set it fast. Get money, get this, get the money, get that. But be Jack, it's from, I got it, man. Screw yourself, party, ride with the flag, and shit. B, smooth. Come on, man. Hold up, ay, is we hard? Hold up, Briscoe, say we hard?
Ay, I gotta shoot this video out. This is not my story, yeah, but we never know what's on. Yeah. All that is hers. I don't want it, it's the top dog in the game. But what I'm gonna do? I, this my first interracial relationship, she didn't say this, you know the saying? Once you go black, your credits stay first.
Automatic.
I need, ay, you need to be there.
Ay, so, ay, I got you. Man, Richard, this motherfucker tonight. We all in here tonight. We all in here tonight. Hey, we gonna party till all night, ain't we? We gonna party till all night, ain't we? All night. Tomorrow night is cracking.
Tomorrow night, hold on, hold on.
Tomorrow night.
Head on 142th Street. And downtown is going down. You gotta get there. It's gonna be live. The loud one, yeah. Wanna get it on? So chill with us.
Y'all be in the building, man.
Yeah, this is the best of the best.
It's on record. Now, I saw Briscoe taking pictures in between, so we do it for him, too.
That's for more sight. I stay ready, and he be great. Play you, bro.
Yeah, Sacramento's finest, behind us, you want that, you want? Come on, man. I'm out of that birthday, I'm out that San Francisco, while we repping this Sacramento. They doing our thing. You can catch us every Sunday, touch the class.
Every Sunday. Every one of them.
Come on, man, ain't nobody fucking with us.
Goddamn Sunday. We need to get a Sunday.
Everybody get in that joint.
You gotta capture this genuine motherfucking smile.
Here nowadays, man, you gotta capture that.
Ay, look, the video, the video ain't stopped running all night. I'm taking pictures in between video, so I got anything. I got it all.
For the natural shit.
Beamer.
We got, I've been thinking about something we did in Gray Garage, where it's a sickness beat. It's a hit, bro, you sleeping on it, you sleeping on it.
A little bit clearer, T.
Let's see, I heard, let's see.
It conceded, you feel me? Y'all talking about, hello, same. You know, talking about, I've been a lot of places.
Go ahead, man.
I've been all over, real, baby. And we here, you know, it's a lot of loved ones here. Shout out to my nigga Psy, you know, talking about real TV, we in the building, baby. You know, talking about, play J66, money over everything, gang.
Pop one of you, hoop, baseball, come holler at you.
Ay, nigga, ay, ay, we undefeated, nigga, the cadence, nigga, right now. Ay, yo, and we just matched a lot of niggas. Twenty-one first quarter, nigga, routed.
Can I say something? This year, we just, it's our first year. Every team in the playoffs, hell, we got one team that won. The rest of them is one in the same.
Ay, we, ay, we undefeated. Ay, look, the regular cadence is a lot of only undefeated teams right now. We banging them, motherfucker.
Wait, wait, where that camera, where that camera? Where that camera? Where that camera? I will be it tonight. Ay, where that camera? Jay, man, City Council, my brother, we putting out, you know what I'm talking about? I appreciate everybody coming out here. He appreciates everybody coming out here.
Appreciate everybody coming out here, too.
Everybody rock, they get their thing, and it was positive, you feel me? Everybody. And you see us cracking in here. Turmoil, nigga, you already know what it is. New south here, nigga, blue thing, nigga, turmoil, nigga. My brother Jay Ali, feel me? Brother Tio out here, it's really my big brother right here.
CF, you already know, really doing it, B.
Eastside? 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 We out here. My big brothers right there, you know? But it's good, everybody out here was positive. Sam always talking about some haters shit. Nah, nigga, this ain't haters shit. Look around. Everybody, everybody here. Ain't no haters here. Money. Get free money. That's money, baby.
Don't leave me out here. You don't leave, they don't leave me out. I'm out that brand, man, I can't even do it.
Look at him, bitch, what you doing with a bottle? Y'all got the whole bottle. I'm refilling my niggas for free. Woo! That's my nigga Lacy.
Big Denver, man, I'm the no different.
I'm recording, I'm recording video, too. I'm recording video the whole time, Trey. I ain't just no, you caught tonight. He gonna know.
Yeah, man. Hey, this is, this is B-Bay right here, man.
Man, I'm just a background there, man.
Yeah, no, no, man. That guy, man, he.
That's all I am, man.
He's one of my favorite artists in the whole wide world, man. And I got an ear for him.
And he is mine. Yeah, you understand me? I reciprocate that shit.
Say, love, bitch. Let's go.
I'ma take a photo, both y'all salute, I'ma take this photo, hold on. Look at the monitor, look at the monitor.
Big shot to the town in the house.
Look at the monitor, so you know, so you know you in focus.
Hold up, hold up, hold up! So nice, I had to play it twice. Somebody gonna get something tonight.
...